Law changes and everybody's at twenty-five percent on that. Cause there's different manufacturers for the E tab. Pilot's the biggest one. And that'd be the same across the board.
And none of the proceeds would go towards your pension?
It's illegal to put into the pension. So to curb all that.
That's correct. You can't do that, no.
Okay.
There's in your packet, they gave me a sheet of what we can donate to and what we cannot donate to. And just to prove that for, what would you call it? Trade of accounting. We are too heavily audited to even speak of something like that. So, thank you.
Any other, anybody else that wishes to speak or against?
Hi, I'm Diane Barrett, gambling manager for the Kenyon Snow Drifters. And we currently are in the Kenyon Muni and Lacy's. Just gonna run by a few numbers for you guys. We've probably been, I believe it's been a little over twenty years since we started gambling. And I became the gambling manager in December of two thousand eighteen. I took over for Adam Schuster. And we did not keep any gambling funds for our club until two thousand nineteen. It's the first time we kept, started to save some money. And right now, our equipment is, I should say our, not our family equipment, cause that's all paid for. Our snowmobile club equipment, which is our groomer, is a two thousand eight. Our roller that we have. And our sign trailer is a two thousand eighteen or nineteen. And I believe in twenty twenty-one, we purchased the shed out at River Country. And did extensive repair and upgrading to that store equipment. I can give you a few numbers. This is our fiscal year. And this is just for the liquor store. What we paid Minnesota gambling, and that's for the E tabs, was sixty-six thousand four hundred and forty dollars. Pilot games was six thousand dollars. Rent that we paid to the liquor store was forty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-four dollars. Games for the paper pull tabs was six thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars. And what we paid Minnesota revenue was one hundred and thirteen thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Donations that were made last fiscal year was, and this was just out of the liquor store, was just short of twenty-five thousand dollars. And that included KW Prom, Kenyon Police Department for twelve thousand six hundred dollars. KW Fishing Club for a thousand. City of Kenyon, forty-two fifty for the Shriners. City of Kenyon, twenty-two thirty for the Inflatables of Depot Park. And others, areas that we have donated to. For the police department, we've done a shop with cops. The bicycles, guns, tasers. Kenyon Fire Department, we've done first responder vests, the countertops. The school, we've done prom, the after-prom, Eagle Bluff. MacBooks so that they could stream the sporting events. And that was thirty-nine hundred dollars. The fishing club and the KW Booster Club. Other items we've donated to towards the city was the Gunderson House, the swimming pool, skating rink. And besides rent at the muni, we bought three TVs, computers, the patio door, the hood vent. And eleven hundred dollars for a sink that never got its stall. So, we just kinda feel that, you know, we've worked hard to get where we are. And we don't have tax dollars to buy our equipment. It's all done basically now out of the gambling.
Does the DNR help you guys at all? Do they ever give you?
We do get, we do get what's called Granton A funding, and that's to maintain your trails.
Okay.
And that pays for fuel, any repairs that we need to do on the groomer. First, the post that we, cause we, they supply you with signs.
Okay.
But we have to actually.
Post them.
We have, no, we have to actually buy the post.
Oh, okay.
And then the nuts and bolts and whatever. And then we also, the other thing we do too is to the landlords, because we go up across a lot of private land.
Sure.
We give out landlord certificates every year for thirty dollars. And that is used at businesses here in town.
Okay.
So it's another way of trying to bring them in. And those are people that put an ad on the county, the Gooden County map. So it's basically the liquor store, Lacy's, I'm sure Angie's will do it when we renew our maps. Speedway, just one other one here in town, I can't remember which one it is. But, okay. Questions?
Attorney Riggs, do you have something to say? I know you do.
Sure, I, no, I can jump in. Obviously, the explanation that you have in your staff report from Holly and Mark is spot on. You've got an operating entity, it's been here for a while. You've got the relief association, again, it's not the department, it's the relief association. Can't be the department, can't be the city doing this. They're coming to you while, you know, the firefighters here. It is the relief association you're dealing with, not the fire department. Can't do it legally, but that's what has to happen here, so keep that in mind. Obviously, there are restrictions on what you've been using money for, and we are talking about the law. You can't use pensions and things like that. City can't demand money from the relief association, just like you can't from the snowdrifters. You can't do that. They make their donations based on what they do, as long as they do it in the trade area and they meet the percentages that you have. You control some of that by ordinance and most of it by state statute, so that's the reality. You have, as the council, the option to do what you wanna do here. In bigger communities, oftentimes when another applicant comes in for charitable gambling, you find a different site to do it. Here, you're talking about, you know, the site over at the muni, which, yes, there have been situations where there have been multiple operators in certain areas. It doesn't work real well, and I've not seen that happen. I've also not seen a up and operating entity kicked out in the thirty years I've been in attorney. And I've dealt with this in other communities. I've never seen where somebody didn't bring a release unless there was a problem or somebody went away and stopped operations. Doesn't mean it can't be done, there's a very simplistic lease that the state uses for these sites. That's what you're controlled over this is really other than the ordinances and the payoffs that have been discussed by both groups. So, I mean, that's, that's it, that's what you got. You've got a reasonable amount of discretion on what you wanna do. I don't envy the decision you guys have to make, but from a legal standpoint, I can answer any questions you need for that. You may wanna do what Mark and Holly say here and have a work session and look at this, think about this, see what the numbers are. Decide where to go. See if there's a solution of other sites that can be utilized. That oftentimes is what other communities do. Obviously, we're limited in that because of the size of the community.
I did have one question for you guys, now I remember it. The groomer, roller, and shed, is all that stuff paid for?
Absolutely, I told.
Okay.
Yep. Can I just add one other thing? Our goal as a club, when we started this, has always been, when we were donating the money, to try to benefit the most people in the community. And so we've been very cautious about what we've given our money to. And again, like I said, we haven't kept money until two thousand nineteen. That was the first time. We were doing this for twenty years. And now we're taxpayers on the shed.
Counsel, is there any other things that you would like to bring up? Bring your own personal opinion in as to what you think is best? I think we would all like to hear your comments.
Well, I'll go. Okay, so it's hard because I love everybody here. I do. It's just a really hard decision. I mean, I think it's hard for everybody. I mean, the only, I mean, I can see it from both sides, I can see both sides of it. So that's what makes it really hard, and I think that we might have to have a session and just hash it out. Because I don't, and I know the snowdrifters have been doing this forever, and one of them, they donate. I mean, you, do you guys have, cause you, my only other thing is you guys have other places you get stuff? That you gamble, that you have tickets, right? You have other, like Dennison?
No, Lacy's.
Not Dennison?
Lacy's.
Just Lacy's, okay, you have Lacy's. I mean.
And that's been, you know, over the years. Iffy.
If I didn't know any, if I didn't know any of you, you know? And I was like looking at this from the top, I mean, and then you have Lacy's and they have that, that would seem fair to me. But I guess with all of this information, I, I mean, I think I have to think about it longer, but, I don't know. I mean, if I looked at, if I looked at it from that point of view, like if I didn't know you, and I didn't love all of you, and I was just looking at it a practical point of view, it'd be like, okay, well, this, this is, I mean, you're helping the community, but they're helping the community and they have stuff they need to buy, and that's gonna take tax, tax dollars away. I mean, it would, you know, it would ease the burden of the, if that's the case, you know, I don't know, would it? Attorney, do you think that would, I mean, that's why I think we have.
Yeah, I, I can't speak for what the relief association's gonna do, but obviously, it's explained, those contributions are made to the community as well.
Right.
Cause the snowdrifters have been doing that quite a bit, for both fire, police, and other entities, the school, whatever it may be. You know, I don't wanna say it, but at some point, you're looking at moving a shell game around, if they're the same source of money. That's why I say, I think you should think about this.
Right, yeah.
And look at it and determine how much is the snowdrifters already giving to the fire department for your purchase of equipment? Or the police department for purchase versus what the relief association can do in the same vein. Again, you have difficulty directing that, but I'm sure they both have valid reasons for what they do and upstanding reasons. But no, there's no perfect answer, but yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely not a perfect answer.
Yeah, yeah.
There's two, they, right on their website say they, thirty percent. And we're gonna do like Wannamango and strive to do over. That's right on their website.
Okay.
Diane, can I, can I just add one other thing? When you, when you're talking about the two sites, Lacy's and the liquor store, that's a big difference.
Right, yes, right, I mean, I can imagine.
People, people think of Lacy's as more of a restaurant type. I mean, we knew that going in, they, they were told that also.
Right.
And just like, at least two weeks ago, I talked to one of the firemen. And I said, I heard you need air, new air pack things. And I said, just jot me down a little letter, you know, and I'll take it to the meeting. I said, we'd be glad to give you a donation. They don't, they haven't come to us to ask us for donations. But we'd be happy to give it to them.
Yeah, okay.
All right, I'm gonna try to get this short, cause I ramble. I, when I was chief, benefited from the snowdrifters. They do an amazing job, and I would never say otherwise. I know that the spirit is on top when it comes to getting things fixed and organized, and she's awesome with the funds. They do great, great work, I think. I heard numerous years about how nice our trails are, people are coming here, I want this to be kind of a destination spot and so forth, so I like that. So this is no negativity towards them whatsoever. I've also broken bread and I've gone into some pretty scary calls with our fire department. I've stood shoulder to shoulder with them on calls, and we've had some very serious things go on. And I want them to have the best gear. My fear is, is if we don't step up and figure this out, we're gonna have a situation if we had a neighboring community where people quit. And I would be the first person to say that when my house catches fire, I have a medical, I don't care what this gear costs. I want it at my house, I want it thrown out, and I want good, trained, quality people doing the work. So, and it's our responsibility to come up with an answer to this. That's what they hired us to do, or excuse me, invited us to do. So, I see the pros of both, I do. I also, as a taxpayer, have to answer the people as well. And if we can't come up with some sort of a solution to offset some of these expenses, and then maybe kinda put Wannamango on the spot here, and you can choose to answer this or not. Have you benefited greatly enough from this where you think it has helped your membership grow and stayed over the years? And choose to answer that or not, could be just food for thought. Same thing here. Without having good quality gear, having to share stuff or not pay care, I don't think we need that, the best shiny membership thing. We can pinch our panties, and I fought youth squads and youth guns and stuff when I was chief, and it worked. Right, we're not NYPD, we're not doing fire, get it out. But the same token, I want us to have good quality stuff, and I want our membership to grow. A younger member there, and I'd love to see that. I'd love to see guys and girls that would continue with us. I've worked side by side with Wannamango Fire over the years, top notch. I would trust my life with any of those guys on a moment's notice. So we have a few decisions to make. So I want you all to consider that very, very carefully. And I guess that's my piece. I think that's all there is for a few minutes.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I'd like to point out that I know we put a thing in for our gear and everything, cause it's outdated. My turnout gear is actually twelve years old. My face mask is a hand-me-down from, I know I can't even remember.
Two thousand seven.
Hope somebody performed. And this last spring, we were at a grass fire, and we were putting on the grass fire and everything. And I was doing fine the next day, went to the hospital, had a mild heart attack, and ended up having a triple bypass. Not saying it's related to the fire or anything, but I would actually like better gear and buy us doing pull tabs to help bring the money in. We don't have to come down here as city council and preach why we need this money for equipment. We can just designate money or to the city, say, we wanna cut the city check, provide us with new gear. And we can stay on top of all our gear. Cause there's really no reason we shouldn't have to write a letter to Snowmobile Club. I mean, I, nothing against them, but we shouldn't have to write a letter to ask for money to help get our gear when we're able to fund our gear on our own. And we've got four guys retired this year, one guy retired for medical reasons. But I mean, that's, I mean, we're risking our lives for our community, and we'd like to be able to. So more support our community by continuing, being able to support ourselves as well.
Kim, I'm gonna put you on the spot.
Well, I pretty much came in with where I thought I was gonna go, and now I'm back and forth. I know it's the pros and cons of both sides. I mean, yes, the snowdrifters does a fantastic job and puts forth a lot of money to the community. But again, the fire department, are they going to make more of an impact on the community? Because at, at one time, I mean, unfortunately, we're all gonna need their service, whether it be medical or fire or whatnot. And I guess looking at the list here, seeing eighteen other surrounding communities that their fire department is running the gambling in their community, that kinda gives me a little fight here, like, well, you know, maybe we do need to make that move. But I personally would like more time to think about it and talk, maybe have a special work session to discuss this further. And, you know, maybe we could, if you guys could find like some kind of letters or something from these other towns too. I mean, Wannamango, it's great that you're here to, to support them and, you know, give your, your ideas. But maybe some of these other little bigger cities like Camp Falls, what, you know, they could get something in writing that we could review from them. Other areas, kind of where I'm at.
What would you like to see from the other towns?
Just something of like how they're, like how many people are on their committee and, you know, how they're controlling everything. You know, is all their equipment paid for? How long have they been doing it? Just anything that they feel that they could divulge to us to help us.
The community only needs to be one person. We chose as a group to have multiples, so we have a backup for the backup.
Right.
Someone's on vacation, we have cover.
Yep.
Someone leaves, quits, retires, we're not caught, unprepared, we have a backup.
Yep.
So that's why we chose to have a full committee.
Just more information.
Just more information of just, a little more that we could kinda help to make our decision.
Holly?
I mean, I, I mimic what everybody has said. I, I know the snowdrifters have done a great job, Diane, you've done a great job with their donations. I know that there's some concerns, awkward some concerns about just making sure that those donations, like Rosefest, like you already brought that up. Like, you know, that's one, and they get a big donation, and you know, that type of thing. But I, I hundred percent agree with everybody. I, I know quite a few people from a few of these other towns, and they have a thriving fire department. They've done a really nice job of managing funds, Wannamango, you guys do a great job. So, you know, there's, there's value to that. There's value in, you know, having the right, but there's value in being able to be forthright and, and, and own some of that responsibility to get that money to be able to get that agreement. That's big. So I'm torn a little too, so I think a working session would be good. And I think that's something we should look forward with and before we make our final decision.
I've listened to both sides tonight. I've given a lot of thought myself. One thing that I, two things I wanna make clear is, one, with the fire department, I'm the oldest member of the council here, meaning years of service here. When it was the very beginning, when there was a fire department building to be built, I approved of that. Everything that the fire department has gotten up to this very moment, and I'm saying the air packs you will get, I'm sure you will. I have always myself voted for it. Fire department deserves it. But the question that I do have is if you go into the gambling end of it, departments, you have control basically over the other departments as to how much you're gonna give them, if you're gonna give them at all. And that I can see as a problem, even though you mentioned you were going to go with Jeff on the dividing up of the funds that the state will give out. Those are a couple of the things that I really question. Now, the other part of it is, the snowdrifters themselves have been here for how many years? And they've always given back the money to various important situations. My question is, where is that money gonna come from? We do know with the fire department, we know where it's gonna come, because it'll be in the budget, always. And I personally don't feel that it will reduce the fire department budget when it comes to the taxpayer. If anything, it's gonna stay the same or go up. My personal opinion, and I'm saying it, yes, I wanted, I want to listen and have another meeting with it. But I will tell you this here. I know any individuals on the, on the snowmobile club, some of them are closer than what normally is. Some of you guys on the fire department I know. And I get to, like Wayne, I get to speak to him quite often with, with things, and I think we have a pretty good rapport. But personally speaking, I'm saying for my own personal, I have to stick with the snowmobile club at the muni, because they do spread the money out. Now, if the rest of the council decides that they wanna go a different way, I have to accept that, and I will work my best at working with it that way. But for the moment, that is my personal feeling, is let the snowdrifters continue on as they have all these years. There's nothing against anybody on the fire department, but I am sure that you guys will receive what you need. I honestly do. It's a good idea for what you have there in making funds. Now, here's a question that I'm gonna ask you guys, you might not be aware of it. As commander of the American Legion, we have bingo four times a year. And I can tell you this here, we make a sizable amount of money. And like you said, you go to the, donated over for the baseball diamond over at, at Wannamango. We chipped in five thousand. At the very beginning, when Kirby Van De Walker asked us about it, there wasn't even a question, we did it. I'm suggesting to you guys, talk to the gambling manager at the VFW, and see once you, if you guys can put together as a bingo night or nights throughout the year. I will tell you this here, it takes men, it takes a dedication to sell those tickets. You're gonna have to buy a few things, but I can tell you this much, a fifty-fifty, you're still gonna make a sizable amount of money, fast. If you want me to help you, I will. Question?
We already have bingo established, I'm sorry, we already have bingo established at the muni.
Yes.
Every Thursday.
Yes.
The third Thursday of every month.
Yes.
And we have at least six, ten guys there that Thursday to sell tickets and everything.
Yes.
But we get about twenty people in to play bingo, and all of them, twenty, ten of whom are our wives.
Our what?
Our, our wives.
There you go.
So we get a hundred and eighty dollars is what we pull in from our bingo night averaging. So that's not a ton of money. And basically, we're better off stopping the bingo, each of us donating thirty dollars a month to the fire department for donation, we'd make more money.
Okay, I'm gonna answer your question on that, but we have one back there.
One thing I forgot to mention was, and I'm not sure they're aware of this, but I'm sure they are, cause they've been doing their homework. Starting in January first of twenty twenty-five, legislature passed on the E tabs. They're taking away all the free plays and the bonuses.
Yes.
And you will have to hit the button for each line you want to open, cause they want it to resemble a paper pull tab. I don't know what's gonna happen with the E tabs. I have a feeling there's gonna be a lot of less people playing.
Yes.
Unless that gets changed, they had actually, Minnesota Gambling Control had a town board meeting, whatever, tonight, on this whole thing up in the cities. But I mean, it, it's kinda scary what's gonna happen with them. We're not happy about it.
Yeah.
The gal talked about that with us when we were.
And that will affect all charitable.
Oh, yeah.
We gotta thank the governor for that. He took away from every organization, VFW, the American Legion, I don't care who it is, snowdrifters, the local works, including the fire departments, the various other ones. Now, getting back to your question, a hundred and eighty bucks, that's a big sale for you. You know what? We give that away as a fifty-fifty. A fifty-fifty? If you get a hundred and eighty bucks, let's say it's to a hundred and fifty, for easy figure. If the pot comes in at three hundred, we give fifty away, fifty percent of it away, that's a hundred and fifty. I'm telling you, we make some good money.
Well, we bring in like thirty dollars and our pots are fifteen dollars.
Forget your thirty dollars, I'm gonna tell you this here, get with it, and I'll explain it to you after, we don't have to waste the time here. But I can tell you, why do you think there's so much in bingo in the area?
But we also have some rest.
They're not standing around for thirty dollars and talking about three thousand dollars or fifteen hundred. Guarantee you, you're gonna get some money. Well, I guarantee you, you're going to get some money.
Part of the reason for doing the bingo was to improve the sales at the muni. That was talk to us about, do you guys want to have a bingo night? I have a deck night. I'd like to have more customers.
Exactly.
So if you want to do something, make a few bucks, I'll make a few bucks. Everybody wins on it. That's why it started there.
We are doing a progressive jackpot also and that's up over three hundred dollars right now. So we are offering big prizes for, to get people in and we just...
All I'm saying is if you are interested in doing it, I will help you approach the people at the VFW. That will, you can work with them. I'll see what's what I can help you with. But if you're not interested in it, that's okay. That's up to you guys. But I think you should look at it. Go ahead back there.
One suggestion I'll make to these guys with the bingo, there's not enough advertising and people don't remember the third Thursday of the month. Because then you've got to sit there and count down your calendar. It's the same way with when they have the mixer. It's like the third Thursday of the month. People don't remember that. It's got to be the first this or the, you know, the first Tuesday of the month or something. People will remember that. And there's not enough advertising. I mean, nobody, I mean, it's either got to be social media or banners posted out on the, on the patio so that when you drive by, you see it.
I think probably went far enough on this discussion at this time. Do you have something else to say?
I don't, but I think you should have a work session and answer it out. I really think you need that.
I think we, oh, it's only parties to do that. I think most people are...
Yeah, I think we're pretty well beat the horse up already. So what do you council want to do? You want to introduce another work session?
Work session, yes, yes.
Okay. Then we need to motion on it.
I'll make a motion that we have a work session. I'll second it.
Okay. Motion has been made, second, to have a work session for the Kenyan Fireman Relief Association gambling request. All of those in favor of it, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes, ayes. Okay, I guess the last is other business. Schedule of upcoming meetings will be KMU meeting will be Tuesday, October the seventeenth, four P M. E D A meeting will be Tuesday, October the twenty-fourth at eight A M. City council meeting again will be Tuesday, November the fourteenth at seven P M. And the Township Fire Contract Meeting, Tuesday, December the fifth at six P M. And Wayne, dazzle them with everything you got, okay? You know, for, for the questions that they're going to have because I know there's going to be quite a few. Okay, and item number five is a twenty twenty-three budget and levy public hearing, which will be December the fifth at six thirty P M. So council, we will have to be here for the Township Fire Contract and the Budget Levy Public Meeting. So I believe that's it, Mark. Is that correct? Okay, council and general staff.
You got to set a date for the work session?
What was that?
Set a date for the work session?
Not at this point in time. We can't do that though. Do you have something or should we get, for a work session, to see what your schedule is, the rest of them here, and get back to Mark, today is Tuesday by, can we do it by Thursday?
Yeah.
Does that work for you, Mark? You're going to be going next week.
Yeah, but this, you want to still try to do it by the end of the month or do you want to do it early November?
I would say we get it over with as quickly as possible.
As quickly as possible as possible.
I'd say within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, so, um, so the week of the twenty-third. It'll be two weeks out. I mean, next week.
Next week is M E A and you leave twenty, so...
Yeah, which doesn't matter. You just look for it next week.
I'll tell you what, why don't we put in, Mark, you're going to be here tomorrow, right?
Yeah, so...
Look at your schedules and see what's what works through and back to him and then we can work it out from there.
Yeah, the twenty-third.
Maybe the week of the thirtieth because that'll give us another week to get this stuff together, the week of the twenty-third.
Then your date's tomorrow, tomorrow.
But...
I'm open those, all that after.
The thirtieth.
The week of the twenty-third is not good?
Yeah.
It would give us, I'd like another week just to get that in court because I'm going to be gone next week.
Okay, right. You got to pull yourself together.
So, well, I don't know.
That's fine. No, that's...
Week of the thirtieth, twenty-three.
I could do that.
All I'm just going to say on it is, I will work with whatever happens, but I do prefer it to be later in the afternoon or five o'clock or so. Mary, does that work for you?
That works for me.
And how about you, Lee, it does for you too after five o'clock, right?
We start to meet on Thursday, so I can't make it Thursday, but anything after five o'clock.
Five o'clock?
Six, I can't make it, everything else.
Is it good for everybody at five o'clock?
Five, I don't know.
I'll have to, and that looks for you.
Well...
We'll go with what we can. Okay. So we do know it's going to come up sometime, the week of the thirtieth possibly, and it'll be at least five o'clock. That's the information we got right now. So, okay, we'll go with council and staff, general comments. And Mark, we'll start with you since you didn't have to work today.
Yeah, I'd like to thank all of the volunteers that helped with painting the depot on Saturday. It's a great project. The whole, most ninety-five percent of the building got painted inside and out. So I'd like to thank everybody that helped with that.
Jerry? How about you?
Nothing further?
No. I don't have too much to say at the moment either. I think it was a good discussion though tonight, to be very honest about it. Holly?
I would agree. Good discussion. Again, based on people that helped paint the depot, yep, and it was kind of fun. And then, you know, we closed out the farmer's market. Successful first year. Yay, second year, second year, yeah. Yeah, we had the first year was, yeah.
It's very good. Yes, good.
Yeah.
Same thing. The depot looks amazing. Thank you to everyone that organized it and volunteered. Just a reminder, a couple upcoming dates for Park and Rack. We have trunk retreat, October twenty-ninth, Sunday afternoon from three to five. Still looking for people to volunteer to open up their trunks and spread the joy to the kids. And then Christmas in Kenyon, we are starting to make plans for that. That will be Saturday, December ninth. That's it.
Um, Kayla, can I interrupt you for that? Just because I feel like this got lost like the last two years. And like even I quit doing this just for Christmas in Kenyon to, I mean, maybe the fire department, I don't know. But anybody that's listening, if you have a business, like I just didn't see that the last two years for some reason. But we always had stuff, like we gave away something and we had a drawing or, and I know this is a personal thing, but maybe if you could bring that up to them, you know, like I always had cookies or, you know, there was just more in the businesses.
Yep, I've got a daily dipper on last year and basically it's up to each individual business of what they want to do.
But it feels like it dropped off for some reason.
Yeah, I think the, like the drawings, you know, I always remember going around and throwing the buckets in the jar and you get fries and that, so.
Okay, good.
So, yeah, no, we'll be coming around to each business.
Okay, thank you.
Lee?
I just want to thank all the staff. I mean, you do a tremendous job and you're not thanked enough. So in today's world where people working with the public don't hear that enough, I appreciate you all. So that's all I got.
Little lady in the corner there, Holly. No, I know you don't have anything to say. Holly? We're going to open it up. Is there any other comments that the rest of the people want to say? Otherwise, we're going to make sure.
I'll say, sorry, can I say one thing?
Sure.
So we do have our equipment for body cameras. They arrived last week. So I'm looking forward to that quickly. We thought that we should be rolling hopefully by the fourteen. So we're ahead of schedule on that. We just got to get a couple of these installed in our squad and our P E and make sure we're moving forward on that. Thanks, good job.
Okay, thank you.
Are you going to give us the information that you're requesting since we need a work session? What would you like us to bring for that? Since you want more questions answered?
Yes, we'll get you something. We'll talk about what we all need. I mean, we got really good information. Yeah, that was, thank you. That was very helpful too, by the way.
Yes.
But yes, we'll get you something.
Okay, how about a German?
I'll make a motion to make German. I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made. Second, a German meeting, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.